This is the Congress.
All right, welcome to the Joint Planning Commission City Council Work Session. June sixth, twenty twenty four, it's five thirty, we're at City Hall. And we'll call this meeting to order. First is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your republic, which expands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. Jackie, do you have the ability to take role for the Planning Commission?
Um, I don't have their information, no.
Okay, Rick, do you have the ability to take role?
Oh, yeah, I will deal with this. Right, Commissioner Grant. Commissioner Bearman. Mr. Goldman. I'm sorry. Yeah, Commissioner Anderson. No, and Commissioner May. Commissioner McCollum, sorry. Not present. Okay, so we have three. Four questions.
Okay. Jackie, would you take role for City Council, please?
Yes, Counselor Coker.
Excuse, really.
Okay. Counselor Bjarnson.
Here.
Counselor Charman.
Here.
Counselor Brewer.
Here.
Mayor Kutchin.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Hollitt.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Item four is additions, correction, adjustments. Rick, do you see any adjustments?
None that I am aware of.
Okay, any counselors have any adjustments? All right, moving on to item five, and that's public comment, and understand this will be public comment concerning the work session, not. City Council will have another public comment afterward. We convene that at six. So any public comment, either online or in the room, or the planning session, or the work session?
I think these two might be a little confused.
Do you understand?
Yeah.
Okay.
He does the other well.
Okay. Thank you. Um, no public comment seen. That brings us to item six, that's business from the City Council, and with a work session with Planning Commission. Six point one is presentation discussion of the TGM Code Evaluation Project Part Two. First, maybe we can go around and introduce the consultants that have done this great work for us.
Yes, definitely to introduce the MIG, we have. Darcy and EQ are in agreement, which are preferred. They will all work together, they work with us to achieve GMM Day One. So we're definitely happy to have them on GMM Phase Two as well, and we also do represent the DLC, we have Mickey. And the DLC representative along with us on this project as well. So without further ado, I'd like to hand over to you.
Alright, well, thank you to everyone. For Darcy, we. We're discussing the. Second phase of the French for evaluation of the project. So this project is part of a transportation road management. Ramped on through the early. So using those planning plan conservation development. For this project, this implementative system is my development laws, which. Oh, focused on the addition of land energy resources. The fullness use of our services. To promote mixed-use development, having services, home and shops. Pressing to each other, then also to provide transportation options to visitors to visiters of Obridge. To allow more safe and convenient parking by the rolling drive and. Really creating spaces that visit. Maybe that gives them a role to be in. And so overall. Tonight we'll be focusing on, we're gonna be a little recap of the one that we did today. Talk about the. In the engagement that we worked every year, and that we received in that portion of the project. And also started to tie in some of the work that was launched. By a separate project, helping analysis and how that will be. And that obviously incorporated to. Not the family space of our project. So some of the more specific project objectives. In evaluating over some coordinates and components, in one. Were to provide safe transportation choices. Promote a viable business environment. Create a vibrant uptown district for. Pre-survivalcy of uptown. Integrate menus and development standards and promote the Oregon. The transportation planning rules. Identify barriers to the housing development and also next degree infrastructure. Of the community in order to protect cultural resources. And I think this project were really focusing on this barriers to the housing price. Evaluating the old town design subdivision standards. Evaluating existing. To talk a little bit about this one. So our Phase Two project objectives are to amend the overcompensated plan and zoning ordinance. And then the Phase One Action Plan. Which. Has been attributed to the City Council. During Phase One, and then also when the key elements of the housing needs assessment. I was considering June twenty twenty three. The recommended code amendments from this project will also bring the city's code into compliance with any recent state legislation that regards housing developments. Uh, so the timeline for Phase Two, right now. Base, next will be over the summer working on some draft amendments, where we'll provide a review. Yeah. How much is this getting? So over the summer, we will be meeting with the project advisor, the. For this project to discuss the draft matrix that outlines all of the recommendations. Recommended code amendments carried through from Phase One. We'll also be hosting a virtual public workshop. By the end of the summer, we will deliver a full draft of code amendments. Throughout the fall and winter of this year, we'll refine those code amendments, we'll meet with the advisor, the ID again. And we'll also host an in-person community meeting and another virtual workshop to discuss. And the proposed amendments. Provide a second draft of those amendments, and also have another planning. And this brings in twenty twenty five, we'll bring the project to a close. With final amendments adoption and findings. Level Plan Commission and C Council. This project is funded in part through federal funding that expected on August first, twenty twenty five, so we will. Integrate the whole project to a close by then, including how they can. The draft amendments through the adoption process. So that would be an exciting time, it's twenty twenty five. So just talking about what code amendments and code requirements accomplish. Code requirements can determine where buildings can be built and how they look. It regulates the types of uses that can be in those buildings, is it a residence or could it be living there? Is it an office building, is it a hair salon? It's determining how buildings interact with pedestrians on the sidewalk. Determining any primary entrances, window locations, design features. Like what kind of facade has, what facade potentially. Creating gathering places in front of urban side buildings. The code also gives clear instructions for anyone who wants to build. A new house or. To request that schedule. And it can also enable temporary options like walking by. So we focused on six key topics for. An whole bucket. We started in Old Town, where we discussed. Uh, we discussed revising the architectural design standards, maybe kind of apartment apartments. To provide more flexibility for business owners. I bicycle parking and also lawn apartments without the front door commercial space. And that is. That can be treated to affordable or market reprisal. And these code changes would apply to the Old Town Design Subjectors. Next slide please, which is shown on this map in campus by Hazel Commercial Beach and Second Street. And in the code, Uptown is called Old Town. Kind of used the church interchange immediately, but just to let them say Old Town, it also. The core, commercial district of the city. Next slide please. As far as housing issues are concerned, we're really working, we have a goal to increase housing options. So there could be code barriers to building middle housing types, which are duplexes, triplexes. Town houses attached to urban loans. Creating more opportunities for senior housing. As well as housing opportunities for currently houses of community members. Allowing multiple dwelling or multifamily development, where that residential uses are allowed, creating a new high density residential zone. To encourage more apartments, providing more housing options, puts her to services, community homes like what's up town or. Along the highway corridor, and also preserving land. For commercial uses and the smaller commercial housing types, so balancing. Having a vibrant commercial war with also having a housing front run. And also decreasing the cost of job and various upholstery requirements, because the land needed for housing. Wanting mobile transportation is another key topic of discussion, Phase One. This is basically just providing a variety of ways for people to safely live throughout the community. Including improving the safety of walking, rolling, biking, along and across highway of the day. Providing maybe slim street trees and stormwater flinders to be go development, that just makes it. A safer and prettier place to walk around. Other than just a redevelopment for the house. And also reconfiguring on street parking in Uptown to make space for more bike lanes, as proposed. And that was adopted. Previous comment. On Phase One, we gathered feedback from community members to help define and prioritize the service, all of these. Topics and talk about potential solutions that we are. Action plan. That's why please. Our public involvement included stakeholder interviews, community meeting, online community meeting. Landing mission work session. A joint session like the one we're trying to set up to meet it. And the priority that we can identify were allowing permits to be built to house commercial data requirements. In the Uptown District, increasing housing options, identifying the barriers to middle housing and providing. Housing for seniors, accessible housing, professional housing, workforce housing. For some of the highest housing needs identified, also improving the safety. And we talked a bit about requiring short owners to register units, however. Short-term rental and restructuring. However, throughout the conversation, it was determined that this was. Not a priority for this phase of work, and also not something that can be regulated. Moving on to the action plan, next slide please. The action plan recommends the amendments to the concrete plans of the ordinance, these were the recommendations that were. Summary of all the changes we had during. Phase One. We described some recommended changes to the code. Show how the proposed amendments meet the project objectives, and also document that he supports and proposes. Next slide please. For Uptown, we recommended that we base it on minimum off street parking standards and requiring zero law and development. The building comes right up to the sidewalk, so that you get the. Commercial district field, reducing commercial ground floor requirements to allow apartments. Outright in the Uptown, which is also permitting standalone apartment. Or multi-unit residential users in our one area of Uptown. Also simplifying the overreach frontier from technical design standards to make it easier for developers to. Build a building without a bunch of. Design requirements on outside. Overall, for using standards, we are allowing no house type light initially in our one zone. But also increasing the block sizes, increasing block coverage, middle housing, all residential sound. You allow for more space and potentially more units of housing. Increasing the residential level to three stories in our one. And increasing the ABU or accessory dwelling unit height limit to two stories. Updating housing type definitions to. Match the current state definitions or. Add in proper definitions for middle housing types and accessory dwelling units. Removing special architectural and design standards for multiple dwelling, middle housing. Such as dwelling units and also manufacturer homes. Reducing within off street curving requirements, revise inside plan criteria. Updating minor cycling or view requirements to include. Um, so in terms of allowing middle housing types outright and updating. Definitions for housing types, this is, these are examples of different middle housing types that we. Could be talking about adding to definitions for the usage, townhouses, which. Are attached single family units. Cottage clusters, which are usually smaller homes situated around the common courtyard. And allow for communal space. Duplexes to dwelling units together or triplexes, which is three dwelling units attached together. Middle housing encourages greater housing ability and affordability. And also is a more flexible way to be different needs of the community. For example, perhaps older adults don't want to live in a big apartment building, but they also don't want to the novel rock of their own. Maybe they're even a type likes for a cottage cluster where they have neighbors close by, but are able to have their own space to live in, so. It's a ways that we can get creative with middle housing types. Provide housing options for all different populations. Also updating housing type definitions for all of these different dwelling units. Next slide please. Increasing the ABU height limit. Current requirements may hold on structures, difficult and costly to develop simple dwelling housing. Meaning that some of these smaller, essentially more portable housing types. Might not be getting built, and the numbers that they could be. Simplify the standards to make it easier. To develop these housing types of bridge. And then also increasing maximum ABU height, provides more opportunity to develop a livable, even on smaller block size. You have some for not to be on an extra level or more limited. So this concludes the Phase One overview portion, any questions about Phase One? I'd be happy to sort those before we move into Phase Two, or move into the housing analysis review. But first, I just want to reiterate that Phase Two, the current phase in the project was. Decided to, City Council decided to other change this phase because of the agreement, which all were we just Phase One. But yeah.
Any commissioners have a question for the group? Any counselors? Thanks, I'm wanting this.
Um, so next slide please. Um, next we'll be talking about a little overview of the housing need analysis and. How the recent housing analysis for HNA was completed, which will. Impact some of the code objectives that were recommended. So HNA examines the housing demand and existing projects saw. Of the city and calculates the value of real land. For the development of presidential uses, it also identified the types of housing that are most needed in Obridge. And suggested seven strategies for. Providing more housing in Obridge. HNA is something that's required by the city. To make sure that every city has enough land within their growth boundaries to be able to use. Other means for some years. The decisions will be made for the future of Obridge and making sure that people are able to live here long. Beijing found that over ten years, we had sixty-eight housing units. To accommodate the cities projected for over the next twenty years. And also determined that over has significantly higher share of rural households compared to the county and region. That share of low-income households. Is shown here. Broken down by how low-income each household is. So suddenly, three percent of households in Obridge were found to be lower income. And share of income, that on housing is one way that we measure. How housing burden. Books in the community are. So the HNA found that forty percent of residents spend more than one third of their income on housing. Regardless of whether they find rent or loan. So. That means that a large percentage of low-income individuals are paying more for housing than they might be able to afford. Having very large cost burden to live here. Next slide please. The HNA also found that ninety-five percent of houses built in the last twenty years have been single-family type units, which we know tend to be more expensive. Costly to live in than. Other types of housing such as multifamily housing, or these middle house types that we discussed earlier. And so on top of. These demographic findings and also housing supply findings. The HNA determined that Obridge has enough land to accommodate the need for single-family housing over the next twenty years. However, it does not have enough land so much for multifamily housing to accommodate one major change. And I want to be clear that there is enough land in the city for multifamily housing, there's not a land shortage. It's just not so much for the property use, so there's a lot of our one land that only can allow a single unit housing. That could be potentially resomed to allow more falling deeply or middle housing. Which is a really, they're called, that's much easier fixed, they need to add more land and sure, growth boundaries, lots of things to. Next slide please. So the HNA. Best of these actions to address community availability and housing deficits. Quantities which need to be so many certain areas of play on. Single-handed residential to higher than two. And then also allowing. New type of housing. In existing zones. These are just the minimum actions recommended to address deficits and. The city can choose to implement other masterpieces that like Don needs to expand housing barriers to housing. Incorporating. Each of incorporating a combination of these. Action to the code. This kind of the birth of the Space Two Accord. Next slide please. So based on recommendations in the housing analysis, our team has recommended a volume four. Changes to the code. We'll go to the next slide please. The first one is to allow multifamily housing development outright in Uptown, currently there's requirement for twenty-five feet of the ground floor to be partial. In the C two, the middle uptown. You would suggest allowing all multifamily housing, the downtown requirement for the ground floor. If. Housing is not something that the city wants to allow outright. That's. Fine, however, affordable housing would be allowed outright for state statutes, so. Qualifying and allowing all multifamily housing outright, or allowing. Affordable housing outright. Would be, it's an opportunity that this project has to qualify statutes in Obridge. Another recommendation is to reschedule land for more house choice and create a new RPU identity possession of its own. Resigning existing land from R one to R two. Or from R one to R three will create more opportunities for housing capacity development. And there's an example of potentially what people take. And what we've done in housing development over the last ten years. Next slide please. Additionally, resigning land from R one to R two. Can increase capacity for multifamily residential impact. And manufacturing parks in our one zone. That's just a simple text amendment that will provide more flexibility, citing manufacturing home parks. And it's not something that the city has to identify at this time, specific parcels of which should, where to be so. So moving forward, the project will provide. Just a brief overview of the schedule. We will start to incorporate all of these suggested code amendments to. The code amendments matrix, which is basically just a new table of contents, or. What areas of the importance would look like, once all of these changes are incorporated. We're also looking at how to incorporate some of this. We're also looking at how to incorporate some of the standalone ordinances that exist. In the city realm, incorporating those into a more unified development. So it's like. Essentially, things like plant plane hazard ordinances, some of the R one facilities. That uses will get integrated. So people that are already on the same books were just adding them to a unified document that makes it easier for people who want to develop a bridge. Have all of the road they need to follow in one place. It'd be easier also for city staff to work through the code. Development applicants. We'll provide full text to those draft amendments this fall. And start to work through those discussed with the community and also with planning permission later this week. And with that. I believe I've gone over all of our doing here recommendations. And was there one have a question here from?
What exactly applies for?
That is a very complex question, but the where will housing that is required by the state legislation. Is eighty percent of the area in the year or lower. So something that's affordable. Eighty percent less.
So.
And I don't have a specific other figure, but.
That means. That's all great for that state. So the.
Yes.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Counselors?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Don, because I was thinking the same thing. Now is that by county or community or city? Eighty percent number? Right? Because obviously eighty percent is going to look a lot different in Oak Ridge than what it looks like in Eugene.
Yeah, the area of media income. Is a more granular measure than the county level. I'm not sure exactly where that number is determined by the US Census Bureau. I. I would imagine that that is included in the text of the housing analysis, but there are. Put it in our slides here. Yeah, so we do, that's the media.
So is this, this is. So the description of how that's supposedly accomplished, I mean, if somebody spends. Many policies that were built would affect a lot of sense.
Sound questions?
Yeah.
So. Yeah, so this allowing. Just because you allow affordable housing to be built doesn't mean that it has to be built or that. This is requiring certain bounds. So affordable housing to be built with this. Which to the protest. With me in it is the housing. If someone proposes to build it, they probably do not have an analysis of it all. They see them, they come to them. If they want to build there. The city would have to allow it. It's not, yeah, it's not the state saying you have to build this unit for affordable housing here. It's just allowing it if they want to. Yeah.
Any other questions? I don't have time, but.
I'll be quick. Are there state incentives for developers that want to to develop low-income housing? Is there like state incentives, tax credits and stuff or something like that?
That is outside of my realm of expertise. Maybe you may be able to answer that or. Yeah. Sorry, outside of my realm.
That's okay. That's okay. I was just curious, you know, thank you.
I guess I can chime in too. As far as the work that the housing needs analysis is that it's really identifying where there are surpluses or deficits. And it's my house, I think, that it will be that it is community-based. So if you're looking at a county, you'd be on a county level. In this case, we are looking at the city. So you are looking at incomes within the city of Oak Ridge. So you're not being compared to a different jurisdiction. It's really where your needs are and your projected needs, right? So the population you have into the future. At the median, at the income levels that they are expected to garner. Can they afford to live here to have the types of housing that's commensurate with salaries with income of your population? And really, it's a tool just to point out where you may have deficits. And then recommendations on how to solve for it, right? And obviously, the private sector, private property owners, developers. They have the opportunity then to develop that time. What we're. Asked with is to make sure that the zoning and then the requirements that go along with the zoning allow for the types of housing that you need. Or that you're projected to need. So we're not able to answer particularly the ins and outs of the inputs. Of the housing needs analysis, but certainly that document. Able to and will have that. But we can report out, looks like you need this time. We know that your code has some barriers to actually that happening. Again, from a private. Enterprise, private sector standpoint, we're just suggesting that those barriers be. Modified or come down to allow for free markets to do like saying now. Big A affordable under a certain median or under a certain level of income. That comes with. State incentives and a whole different lending world, right? But we're not really talking about big A affordable. We're talking about affordable to the level of income that your population, right? Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And one of the hopes of the project is that removing these code barriers and doing a study like the HNA will. Call to developer, you know, will attract more development of the types of housing that will certainly be best.
Thank you. Any other questions, counselors? I did have one. You mentioned one change to a use, but you anticipate changes to permitted and conditional uses, particularly in the commercial areas. While you're doing your work here, recommending those.
The only recommendation. That you. Added to the commercial zone is to remove the requirement for the twenty-five feet of ground floor commercial space.
Yeah.
For residential development.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, we're rushing you, but yeah, we're backed up to another meeting, but. Last chance for questions, council commissioners. James, we're going to adjourn this and we'll give five minutes for the staff to reset. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And that'll make it six sixteen to reconvene. And what do you want the Zoom people to do? Stay on?
They can stay on. Jackie will simply stop this recording. And then restart the recording. So we have two separate recordings.
Okay, all right. We can adjourn at six eleven. Thank you very much for coming, Emma.